That she and her firm have done the audit. This is an audit of our internal accounts that is required by statute. She will give us the results.
Sure. Good morning.
Good morning.
Having you here today to talk first thing about an audit. You should have two documents. One is a fairly large document and then the other one has says required communications on the front. And that's the one I'm gonna go through. I think it's a little easier to kind of explain the audit and the process with this document. And then the big one is are the results of the audit. So if we start here, I just want to explain the internal accounts and what our responsibilities are and what our duties and what we are tasked with. We were performing the audit on the financial statements of the internal accounts. And the internal accounts are the funds where all the money is raised within the schools and spent in the schools. So these aren't any of the budget funds or any funds that come from the state of Florida. These would be examples would be prom ticket sales, football ticket sales. We have book fairs, fundraisers. And so it's all money that is raised by the students, the school pitchers that they get the commissions off of it. So in every year, Florida statutes requires that the internal accounts or the internal funds are audited. And so my responsibility is to come in and we are auditing the financial statements, the numbers on the financial statements to make sure they're materially stated. That's our primary goal. And then what we do is we issue an opinion letter. And our audit opinion was an unmodified report. So what that means, that's a clean audit opinion. So all of the balances were materially stated and in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. The other part, when you're auditing internal accounts, the first part is you're auditing the balances. The other part is you're doing a lot of tests on internal controls. And there's lots of rules, laws, policies, procedures that deal with the internal accounts. And what we do is we go in and we pick hundreds of samples and we look at the backup and we make sure that the schools are following all these rules. And then what we do is any time we come across one instance where a school did not follow the policy or procedure, we make a comment. And that's the big document you have. That's why it's so big because we list there by school every finding that we have. And a lot of times we're asked, why do you have to write them up when you've only find it one time? We may look at five checks that they write for the year and we may find one where they didn't get approval ahead of time before they went out and purchased the item and we have to write it up. And it's because we're picking a sample because we're not looking at 100% of everything that every deposit coming in and every check being written. So because of that, when you look at how much is being, transactions are being done throughout the year, we're looking at, you know, a small percentage of the population. So anytime we come up with a finding, then we go ahead and we document it in the report. When we look at the findings that we had for the year, there was nothing, we have findings that we just, that we communicate and that, and we have recommendations for. Then there's findings that are elevated to the level of a significant deficiency that we had to report. And then there's a level where it's a material weakness that we definitely have to report. And we didn't have the findings at these two levels. We just had the recommendations for the schools. And I'll talk about it in a few minutes. We have one for the district. So, so nothing that's required to be written. There was no fraud that we came across during our procedures and no illegal acts that were required to disclose to you that we came across. So I just want to make it clear that when you look at the one document, it looks, you know, it looks pretty thick, but it's because we're just being picky auditors and we have to, you know, document everything we come across. And so every finding is in there. If you look in this required communications, what I reviewed just now was on page two. So if you put to page three, we put some charts in here on these findings that I had talked to you about before with the schools. And you could see at the top, over the last few years, you could see the number of findings per school. And it's expected that's gonna go up and down because again, we're sampling and we're picking, you know, just a small number of transactions to test. So sometimes there's just luck of the draw. We do see some trends in certain schools maybe. And that can just have to do with, you know, you may have some schools where principals or the financial secretaries are really, really strict about everybody following the rules. Because if you think about it, every school, you have, you know, all of these teachers that are helping out with the fundraising and selling tickets. So it's quite a job for the principal and the financial secretary to make sure they're all following the rules. And they do a good job of it, but there may be some schools that are a little more strict than others. And so although there are trends, we do see where because of the luck of the draw of the samples we picked, there's gonna be some fluctuation from year to year. But this year, the average finding per school actually went down a little bit. The other thing we noticed this year was we come out and a lot of the records are here at the district. So we perform all of our field work here at the district office. Then we go back to our offices and we call every school and we go over everything we found. And that is quite a process. I mean, that takes us weeks and weeks to get through to call each school. And we'll go over the finding and a lot of times they may say, well, you know, we have some additional documentation that we didn't send to you the first time. We'll say, go ahead and send it to us. Then we review that. And then there are times where some of the findings get cleared. And so this year, we seem to have a lot more of those where the schools were able to provide us with more documentation and then we were able to clear some findings. So the average per school, you know, did go down slightly, about the same as last year. And then you could see in the middle, there's just a breakdown of the number of findings per school. So you could see, we had 82% of the schools that had either zero findings or one finding this year. So that's, that's pretty impressive. Last year was about 79%. So there was an improvement. And then the other thing I wanted to point out is if you look at the chart, it lists the number of schools or internal accounts that we audited. And that has fluctuated over the years because we had roughly 125 schools. But then there's departments that sometimes have internal accounts. They don't use them very often. And so there may be years where they don't use them at all. So they're not counted, you know, the number would go down, the number of internal accounts. And then there were years where, you know, more departments used their internal accounts. And so that also fluctuates because those are built into the average. And because they may not have as many transactions dealing with internal accounts, they may not have as many findings related to the internal accounts. At the bottom, I just put a summary in so you could see the numbers. Because internal accounts, when you think field trips, fundraisers, you're thinking, okay, well, how much money can that be? So I wanted to show you, it was 12.6 million dollars that went in for the year and then 12, about 12.3 that went out. And with these accounts, we expect the amount going in and the amount going out are gonna be roughly the same. This isn't an account where we wanna save, you know, all our pennies, which, you know, would be nice. That's how we think about all the rest of our money. We sometimes have to make sure we save for the rainy days. But with internal accounts, the purpose of the funds, the students in that current year raised, so then the purpose is to go ahead and spend them in that same year. So that's perfectly normal to see the revenue and expenditures being approximately the If I turn the page, that's where our professional standards require that we communicate certain things to you, to those that are charged with governance, which would be the school board in the case of the district. And again, it lists my responsibilities. I mentioned before is to express an opinion on what, about whether the financial statements are materially stated in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And then the client's responsibility, what the school district's responsibility is, is to make sure that you establish and maintain internal controls, you select appropriate accounting principles to use, and that you apply them correctly. And so as far as our planned scope and timing of the audit, we didn't have any, and then on the next page, it mentions difficulties. We didn't run into any difficulties during, during the audit. We didn't have, I had mentioned before, any risks that we came across that were significant and, you know, anything that we didn't expect in the nature of auditing internal accounts. No difficulties. We, our main contacts during the audit are Carol Matthews and Lisa Hester and their teams. And as I mentioned before, we pick hundreds and hundreds of samples. So, you know, when we walk into Lisa's area and we see her team, you know, we sometimes have to duck our heads because we ask for so much documentation and they pull everything for us. They have it all in order and labeled. So we really appreciate all of their assistance. And also at the schools, you know, we try to put ourselves in the shoes of the principals and the financial secretaries. All they know is there's an audit going on down at the district and then they get an email with a, you know, a list of findings and a phone call to go over it. And so, you know, we try to be considerate of that in, into, and understanding that there may be more to the, you know, to the story. And that's why we take the time to give them the call, to go through the reports with them and give them the opportunity to send us any more information that they may have. So, you know, we appreciate their help also. We didn't have any disagreements over accounting principles or policies or any findings over the type of audit that the school districts require to have. No changes there. As far as misstatements, corrected and uncorrected misstatements, we have, those are what we call our audit adjustments. And we'll go over those in a few minutes. But we had three audit adjustments and they all relate to the receivables at the technical colleges. And I'll talk about those in just a minute when we get to that page. And I'm kind of, I'm not quite going over every item here, but if there's anything here, you certainly, you know, feel free to contact me if there's any questions you have. I'm trying to just hit the highlights. No consultations with other accountants that we're aware of that would have occurred. Internal control deficiencies, I mentioned before. We didn't have any of the material weaknesses to report. We just have an item for the district for their recommendation, a minor item. Not aware of any fraud or illegal acts. And so then on page seven, we'd just like to list any significant estimates we may have, just because of the judgment that's required. And in your case, in internal accounts, there's not a lot of estimates. They're pretty straightforward, but the investments that are held in the internal accounts are reported at amortized costs, which they, which approximates the fair value. And so that's in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States. So it is, it is an estimate of the value of the investments, but it follows the proper accounting policy. Page eight is where we go into our journal entries. And so as I mentioned before, you could see on the bottom part of the page, the three adjusting journal entries we had. And so I want to kind of step back just a little bit for those of you that may not know the history. But a few years ago, the school district had started using a new software called Focus for the technical colleges. And that software was used for a handful of different things. But one, the one that deals with the audit and the financial reporting would be the billing for the students, the collecting of the tuition. And at that time, that first year when Focus was being implemented, it was supposed to basically speak with SAP, which is the general ledger software and upload, they were supposed to upload information and the link wasn't working correctly. And so in that year one, you would look, you could run a report of how much was owed by students and just look at it and know that, okay, this report, these numbers aren't correct. And so there was a lot of extra work that had to be done that year by, by a lot of people at the district going through. And so that year, we had a material weakness that we had to report because the numbers were not, were not materially stated. And it took a lot, there was something broken in the internal controls there. And so then in year two, a lot of this got cleaned up and they were able to come up with a way every month where it was a little more manual, but it was posting a journal entry to record the tuition owed and the tuition earned each month at the technical colleges to record it in the general ledger. And so at that point, there were still a couple of issues with the receivables. But now, this year we're auditing was year three. We didn't have any issues with it. They've got the system down now where they're recording their journal entry each month. And so the journal entries I had though is there's a difference in timing. When I'm coming out and doing the audit and I look at the receivables that are owed from maybe, you know, three years ago, or if this was from June 30th, 2017 or earlier, when I'm looking at it as an auditor, I'm questioning, okay, how much of this do you think you're gonna collect? And because I can't have the entire amount on the balance sheet as an asset if I don't think it will be realized. And so I worked a lot with, with the staff and with Luke out at the technical colleges. And he went through and was able to kind of give me mark off which accounts he thinks maybe may not be collected. The difference is for the district, he's not allowed to just write them off on his accounting records. So I post journal entries, but there is gonna be a timing difference because there's a policy here where he has to wait a little longer before he can request for those receivables to be written off. And so that's why I had these, we broke them out into three journal entries. There really, it could have been one, one big journal entry. And when you net the three, the total effect on the revenue was an increase of $52,000. And it's all just the timing between, because the district wrote off, we just had some differences between when the audit, during the audit, when we wrote off some of the receivables and when the district wrote off some and the ones that the district hasn't written off yet. And so, so, you know, that long story is just to say that the receivables seem to be cleaned up to me. We just have some timing differences because of your policies of when, when I have to report an allowance and when the district writes off the receivables. So does that, that was kind of a long story, but does that make sense to everyone? Yes?
So I can't see it. For whatever reason, I can't bring it up. But do I understand you correctly in that we wrote those off previously and now we're reinstating them?
No. What happened was there were some, so in year one, when the Focus happened, there were lots of adjustments being done. We start our audit in August, September, October, and then November. During that time, the district was trying to reconcile all these receivables. And so they would reconcile some, they would record it an adjustment, they would reconcile some more. So they were doing it in phases where I did a kind of a big chunk. And so then we kind of, we had these differences because of when the district was adjusting them and when I was doing it as one big adjustment. So there was, so it did kind of go up and down, the differences between the receivables, between the audit and the district. But I've been able to reconcile those. And also, I'm recording an allowance where the district just waits so many years and then writes off the receivables?
So I'm confused. I'm looking at the journal entry. It appears that you've reduced the fund balance in the first one.
In the first one, what we're doing is we're reducing the fund balance because I had to reconcile it to, because the district did several different adjustments.
But then you're crediting a revenue account, which is gonna increase the fund balance. So it's just a net?
It is, but it's because when the district, I needed to make sure that for my fund balance to balance, I needed to make sure, because the district was doing the adjustments in different time periods than I was, I had to go back and eliminate the effect in my current year revenue because of, because they recorded adjustments later than I did and adjust the beginning fund balance.
Okay. And I mean, it's immaterial to the financials, it's really esoteric, but I just, I was just trying to understand. So I appreciate that. And I guess my other question is, this has been ongoing for a few years now. When do we expect it to be all cleared out?
So as far as, as far as findings, it was cleared this year. I didn't have any findings regarding the Focus. I feel like the controls are in place. It's, you know, I don't think the system of recording the tuition worked exactly how we thought it would when we first started using Focus, but they were able to come up with a different way of making sure everything's recorded. And that, that system, I think, is working fine.
Sure. And thank you for the explanation. It's really just a question because I realize in the big picture, it's really material. But I was just trying to understand what's happening.
Sure. It was, it was a complicated matter.
Okay.
I said, yes.
So this may be more of a question for staff. So it sounds like SAP and Focus are still not integrated seamlessly. There's a step between them. We built in a manual workaround for, is that, is that, is that correct?
That's my understanding of it.
Is that Focus the same, I mean, like it's, is this a specific to CTE Focus program as opposed to the, to the larger Focus implementation?
The original Focus design was for, are you got Tina?
Thanks Tina. Thank you Tina.
This implementation came about as a result of the workforce community in the state of Florida coming together because there were such challenges with accurate reporting. And so they did an RFP and Broward County won this grant. And the first five years they implemented, and it's so for the, for the district, it was implemented and the licensing was zero cost. The only cost to us was the maintenance cost years two to five. So we went into this, we volunteered essentially to go into this system because our old system, Oscar, I think it was, the old system wasn't working for us. So there are two components. There's the SIS component and then there's the financial component. So it's two separate modules. The financial module, part of the challenge we had was it was not designed for accrual accounting. I'm not an accountant, Mike, so Cindy Wolf knows that lingo. But whatever process we use for accounting is different than the way it was designed. And so we had to figure out how to make those pieces match.
So for the colleges though, what we did was implement the financial aspect of it. We did the?
We did both.
Okay. So we did SIS and, and finance aspect for the technical colleges first, and then we did the larger Focus SIS for everybody.
Correct. And that's a whole separate environment. It is, it's not the same, it's a similar program, same company, but.
They're not integrated with each other?
No. I mean, we are looking at syncing data for some common students. We're actually having some conversation, but it's two completely separate.
Same, same, same company, two products.
Yeah.
And as of now, SAP doesn't integrate with Focus. We have to have some kind of, I mean, at the, at the CTE level, we have to have some kind of workaround for the financials. Is that correct?
I would ask Cindy Wolf that particular piece. I know that we wrote something, or I could ask Diane, we wrote something to communicate between SAP and Focus.
Okay.
To make that connection.
Okay. If we've done that, we should, y'all should take credit for it. So like that's, just let me know.
Okay.
I have a question. Ms. Matthews, Ms. Matthews, you were very much involved in this.
Yes ma'am.
So can you kind of give a historical perspective on the challenges in addition to what she's already said as it relates to staffing and stuff like that?
On the Focus piece or internal accounts? Yes ma'am. We did have some difficulties. We had a very antiquated, old system, like Tina said. And so then when they brought in Focus, you know, it didn't communicate well with the SAP system. Then we had some personnel issues. We had one of our key employees that had done a lot of work and knew a lot of the history and all pass away. So it was a very complex, you know, transfer that took several years. But staff spent an enormous amount of time and worked very hard to make it work. And like Ms. Christiansen said, it is, it is working now. So the findings have gone away and, you know, we're in a good place now.
Thank you. I just wanted her to give that perspective because at the time when we were going through this, I believe I was the chair. So it's not like we weren't trying to get on top of it and I want to commend the staff for doing that.
Yes ma'am, that's correct.
The other question that I have, I don't know who would answer this, is that what is the period that the staff has to wait right off all receivables? Is it two years? How many years, anybody know the policy? If not, maybe somebody can get that answer for us.
Okay, that's where you look, what we've done in the past.
Okay, thank you.
I just have a quick question. How many years is it now that we've had an unqualified opinion?
The five years that we've audited, we've had clean.
Clean, okay. Awesome, thank you.
And I did want to mention with the receivables, I mean, I'm sure everybody knows this, but when the receivables, when they're presented to be written off, they're presented to you, the school board to approve. So there aren't receivables that are being written off without your knowledge and your approval.
I just have a question with regards to succession planning. Do we have that in place in that department? Unfortunately, we, people have, we have tragedies where we lose people or people leave positions. And these things occur and it keeps being, this isn't the first time I've heard so-and-so passed away or retired or we lost them to the private sector. My question is, do we do any succession planning to make sure if that happens, somebody can fill in to those positions that has the knowledge to continue programming?
Mrs. Dorton and I are working on developing a succession plan for not only, I guess, Carol's area, but just for the school district as a whole. You know that we have two arms of the school district. So one would be succession planning in terms of school-based personnel.
Right.
And then also in terms of district offices. We often look at or review retirement dates, et cetera, to start planning in advance for people that we know are retiring.
Is that something, do you have a date on when that would be presented so the board understands and that, what that will look like for us as a district?
I know that would be up to Mrs. Dorton.
Okay. Thank you.
And to be clear, my comments were not critical in any way. I was just simply trying to understand. I've never, I've never seen that type of entry before and I was just trying to get a sense of what was happening there. But in addition to that, I thought we cleared all this out, yes, last year. That's why I was, that was the second question. But I'd like to thank you for your service. You all have done a wonderful job for us. And more importantly, I want to thank our staff for the efforts they've made. You can see in this graph, we've made remarkable progress in bringing down the average findings per school every year. So kudos to the staff and Mrs. Matthews and her team and everyone's work together to make that happen.
And I have to give credit to Lisa Hester. She's the auxiliary accounting manager. And she does a live training session annually, which is very beneficial. And then this year, we made sure that we require training to be mandatory. So they had a choice of either going to the live session or my department created an online training tool with the same material several years ago. And we updated that and we gave them that option. If you didn't go to the live, then you have to take the Moodle course. And I tracked to make sure that everyone did and we had 100% compliance.
Yeah. As a former principal for 11 years, I always appreciated the support that we received and the guidance we received. And it was always a pleasure talking with you and working with you and your team. So thank you.
I just have a few more pages. On page nine, there's a couple of journal entries here. These are the journal entries that we, that we had that were immaterial to the financial statements, so they did not get recorded, but were required to accumulate them so that we can look at them as a whole at the end of the audit. But they were, it's just a matter of, in the inventory, there are yearbooks in there. And it's, as an auditor, when we look at the yearbooks, we don't look at them as having like a readily marketable value to them because the year's been, the school year's over. I know schools sometimes sell a few more in the subsequent years, but, so it was just an adjustment for us to reduce inventory by the amount of the yearbooks that were on there. And then, and number two was just an investment transaction from the prior year. We're just recording the carry forward. We're just recording the carryforward effect of, of not recording it the year before. So not, no, um, you know, immaterial, but again, I'm required to communicate those to you. And then pages 10, 11, and 12, and 13 are just, um, at the end of the audit, we have a management representation letter that, um, and this is what's included on it. And basically this is just, um, a letter from the school district to us as the auditor saying, we fully disclosed everything. Um, we weren't aware of, um, any violations of rules, laws, litigation. Um, it's, it's just that kind of full disclosure, um, letter that's, that's sent to us at the end and, and signed that you provided us with all the information we asked for. There was nothing that was withheld from us. And so, um, again, we have those in here so that you can look through them and see what management represented to us. And then again, on, um, page 14 and 15, this, this is the internal control findings. And all we had was the one improvement point. So it was not a finding. It's just an improvement point. And it has to do with, um, the IT GCs. And really even, even this was, um, more of a minor point. We just wanted to put it in. Anytime we come across anything dealing with, um, IT general controls, we like to put it in, um, just because of the, the IT world we're in today. But, um, but it's just a policy, the change management policy. Um, there, there is a change management policy, but, um, we just noticed it didn't address situations where emergency changes are needed for, um, applications within your IT. And so we just, um, recommended that you consider, um, looking into this, that the IT department considers maybe adding something to that policy to, um, to address that area. Nothing else that we came across during the audit to be, to be reported. So, um, you know, I, I think it was a pretty, pretty smooth audit this year. We were happy with all those.
Tina, do you have any comments in regards to her last?
I'm not sure when you say the IT, whether that's more on the systems application side like Mike's area, um, who has permissions or whether it's hard or technical.
It's, it's more like a permission.
That would, that would be Cindy Wolf's team.
Thank you for the clarification. Thank you.
So the, the big document, um, even though it's bigger, it's going to be a little quicker to go through because, um, these are the, this is the actual, the financial statements. And so if you look on page one and two, that is our audit report. So that's our audit opinion. And I mentioned before, it's unmodified. It's a, it's a clean opinion. And then page three, the, the, those are the financial statements. You have your assets listed out and you have your liabilities. So, um, we have total assets of about $10 million and, and your liabilities are the same. Behind that, we have a footnote, a couple of pages of footnotes. And, um, again, when you look at this like versus a CAFR, I mean, internal accounts just has very few footnotes. There's, there's very few things that have to be disclosed. But we do have in here, um, investments. We break down what makes up the investments and, um, and that the investments fall under the, the rules of the type of investments you can have. And, um, some of the policies inventory consists of, um, we have livestock and we have school store inventory that makes up those inventory amounts. And then, um, and then we have footnote two, what I mentioned before. There's information about the investments we have to disclose. The, uh, the, you know, dealing with credit risks or, um, if there was custodial risks, we have to disclose those. And then back on page eight, we have, um, the, what you may know, like, uh, an income statement or this is a schedule of revenue expenditures and, and changes in our internal accounts payable. So you could see the revenue was 12.6 million and the expenditure is about 12.3. And then, um, page nine and 10 is a standard internal control report that all government audits have included in it. And again, you know, no material weaknesses to report. And then behind that are just all of the school reports that list all their findings. And, um, when we talk with each school about, and go over the findings, they then give us a response to each finding of, um, what their action, kind of like a corrective action plan. And, um, when, when they plan on correcting that item and, and who's going to, who's responsible for it. And so those are all also included in the back there within all the findings.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you very much, Ms. Christiansen.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. Our next item is revised bus attendant, bus attendant substitute job description. And Ms. Portuguese is coming. Will assist us with that.
Good morning. As you can see, we revised both the substitute bus attendant job description and the bus attendant job description. We changed the educational requirements from, uh, completion of a ninth grade to completion of a high school or GED preferred. No financial impact. And, uh, that is the only changes, or those are the only changes that we've made.
What, what's the theory behind going from just requiring ninth grade to requiring a high school diploma or GED? I know it says you would get more folks to apply. Well, I know it's preferred, but still.
It's preferred. So that means that maybe you didn't complete the ninth grade. We may have someone that did not complete the ninth grade, uh, but they still can complete the training requirements and the training courses and still be a bus attendant.
Okay. So it's not raising the bar. Okay.
Kind of, but it's opening the pool.
A little bit more.
Correct.
Okay. And some may not have had either, but have their GED. So therefore they would be able to apply.
Correct. And what we also are doing is, uh, if they don't have their GED and/or high school diploma, we also mandate that they go to, um, East or West Area Adult and provide those classes or, um, Penn Foster, thank you, um, to take the classes. And we assist them with that as well.
So just, uh, the, maybe it's just in, in the wording of the, of the sum, sum, summary. So is, is successful completion of the D, the DOE's bus attendant training mandatory now? And it wasn't before or, or, or not? It's, or, or is it just preferred?
It's always been.
It's always been mandatory.
It's al- it's always mandatory. Okay. So that's, that's not a thing. So it's, okay. All right. But, uh, one thing that's a little confusing just about the, the wording is taught, is we have education requirements and then GED preferred. And I, I just think having preferred a requirement like in the same sentence is a, is just a little confusing. I, when, when I read this first, I thought we were making it harder for people to apply. I, I did. So, um, and, uh, you know, I, I, if that's, and I was going to ask how, if we're reducing the pool, are we going to hire more, more, more people? In fact, I was going to say, let's, let's do preferred. You know, but it sounds like that's what you already does. It may just be some clearing up of the, the language. So I would recommend tweaking that a bit to make it clearer.
I agree.
Okay. Certainly. We'll do try and ask my question too.
Ms. Fields, stand here. And Ms. Miller.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Judy, do you know the number of positions, vacancies that we currently have for the bus attendant?
I think there are about 10, if I'm not mistaken.
And then it, it seems to me like the maximum hourly rate is 12.68. And looking at the, this video.
That's correct.
I had the same comment that when I, and I've sent this asking for more information, but it was because I misunderstood. I was reading that we were, um, making it harder to get the job. And I asked, how many of our attendants now, um, do we have? Is there a majority that do have a GED or are we working, do we have numbers on what it, our demographic looks like now?
Uh, I would say that the majority do have the GED. We probably have about maybe 15. 12?
12. 12. There were 12 that had, um, that were not.
That don't have a GED and/or high school diploma.
Is it mandated that they go and get that through the East Area, West Area, or the services you provided to? We're saying you can have a job for $12 an hour, but you must be completing these classes as well. I'm just worried about the families. You know, we have, uh, we have bus agents that are single parents and that might not be on their time schedule right now. And I don't, you know, want to worry.
We are working with them. Um, it, it's not. We are working with them to make sure that we allow them that opportunity.
Okay. But you're not saying you must do to, to have this job?
We're trying to, trying to get.
You're encouraging them. Okay.
And we'll help them every way possible. And, and we'll kind of, uh, kind of mentor them to that stage. But if, within two years, we would not say you don't have a job anymore.
Okay. You're just projecting that they would continue their education at no cost to them. Okay.
Correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Reeves.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Item number three is our Head Start program governance training. And, um, we have Maddie Freed and Amy Ford.
Hi there.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'd like to introduce to you Carrie Barkley. And she is the senior coordinator of Head Start. Hi. She is here the first time. Please smile at her. As you probably already know, the school district is the governing board for the Head Start federal grant. Um, our federal grant is entering our 10th year of operation. And, um, every year you're given a short training to remind you of your responsibilities and roles as the Head Start governing body. So that's why we're here today. And it is in federal regulation. It is 1301.5 along with the other 5,300 million other, uh, regulations. And the orientation is, is completed for you so that you might be better, um, familiar with what we're doing in Head Start and show our community, um, those kinds of supports that they are in so desperate need of. And we have ensured that our members, uh, both the school board members and the policy council members are fully engaged with the operation of the program. There's a project philosophy.
The Head Start operates on the premise of a three-legged stool type of approach. We support the education of the child, the health of the child, and, but we also have a family component to encourage family engagement. The entire family must be involved. We have a family service advocate that supports the family needs and try to embody them into the school and get them acclimated to expectations of being involved and being the parent and being an advocate for their own child in the school system.
One of the things we all know is that when a child enters school, they don't enter school by themselves. They drag their whole family. It's kind of like a marriage. You get the in-laws too. And so what happens when we have a family, a child is in school and is not engaged, the rest of the family isn't engaged? The potential for the lack of success for that child is heightened. We want, Head Start wants, our philosophy is that the child is a part of that whole family. So that three-legged stool oppose the child only by the health and the education, the family engagement for that child. It really supports our core values. It's not just the cognitive development of the child, but that whole child. The ability for the child to communicate with other children, the ability of that child to share. Now, some of us as adults still find it difficult to share. I was going to give you an example, but I have a new supervisor. He may not like this. I haven't seen him. One of the things that I want you to know is that a power for the Head Start program in our core value is the fact that we have a continuum of care. Many times in early childhood programs across the state, uh, this is true too, like in our BPK program, there's one year of service. Or in a childcare center, they have six to nine months, 12 months in order to reapply for the position to make sure that they stay in. Not so with Head Start. We take them as three-year-olds. 25% of our students are three upon entry. And we keep them for two years without having to reapply for the program. And the purpose of that is to provide longevity of care. That continuum of care helps the child grow, um, cognitively, socially, and it also helps us to involve the parents. So there's a grant structure that's a little bit different than other grant structures in Polk County schools. This is a federal direct grant. U.S. Department of Health and Human Services, the HHS, directly funds, through the series of past items, of course, the local grantee, which is y'all, the Polk County School Board. Our operation is reviewed and overseen by the Region Four Head Start office. They're based out of Atlanta. And when we say everything goes through Atlanta, we really mean it. Not just all of the airplanes, but everything else. What we have found is that our, um, regulations, although they are called guidelines or in the Code of Federal Regulations, they mean must, not may. They mean must. They are developed and revised as needed by the Department of Health and Human Services. There's many regulations and all of them, although sometimes I kick underneath my chair and act like a four-year-old, but I am convinced that every regulation is purposeful and it is intended to support children and their families in growing. So although there's a lot of standards, there are too many in my book, there's fidelity. We're 10 years in operation and we've only had one monitoring review, which was around five years ago. And so low in the hole this year, we have the opportunity to have two, actually three, but the other one's not going to be real difficult. We have Carrie.
January 14th, which is next week, is our class review. Class is a tool that Head Start uses to monitor how the effects of what's happening in the classroom, the interactions between the teacher and the child, child to child, anything that happens in the four walls of the room. It addresses social, emotional, physical, instructional support. So they will be coming to audit the classrooms and they'll be taking a sampling and doing the class observation and giving us a score that shows how we fare in relation to the other Head Start programs.
Across the nation.
Across the nation. And then we have Focus Area Two review, which begins February 22nd. And that's where they're, they're coming to look at all of the million regulations and how we are implementing those and how we address and ensure that we are following the regulations of the Head Start.
That's going to be done in February. Um, we just recently also learned that our Title I pre-kindergarten program is going to be reviewed the week before. So we have that. It's the convergence of the sets. They'll all be down there. You, as the governing body, provide the oversight and hold the legal and fiduciary responsibility and authority for the $10 million. It's not like, um, and you interface with the Head Start Policy Council. This year, we have the privilege of having a board liaison who has been around early childhood for many years, Kate Fields. Sarah Beth Reynolds has been on the Policy Council and Lynn Wilson has been in the Policy Council. And one of the things that we're so excited about is that, um, our Policy Council, if I could say it this way, is dang good. Those ladies and gentlemen are engaged with what's happening in our classrooms and they are truly involved and want to see their children have the best possible programming. There are 23 locations and there are 23 parents that are representing those children at the Policy Council. Let me just talk to you about a little, um, tweak because you are an elected board. There's an exception to the CFR, to Code of Federal Regulation, to how the, um, board operates and your required composition. Because you are an elected body, um, the same kinds of board composition cannot be required. However, as a school district, we do have a lawyer. We do have people with early childhood background. We do have a person with fiscal management skills. And we do have connection with our parents and children in communities. So those are those four requirements that if you weren't an elected body, you would, we would have to have you all on the board. But even though we're not, um, even though we are an elected body, we do have those kinds of representation. You cannot be compensated if you were not an elected body. But since you're an elected body, you can get your huge salary for being on the school board. That was supposed to be a joke. It was supposed to be a smile. Okay. So that's good. You're an elected, um, entity. So you may have compassed, uh, received compensation. I do want to bring one other issue of conflict of interest. And I don't know if this is true. But if you would communicate with, um, the Susan or myself concerning a conflict of interest. If you have a- If you have a... If you, as a board member, have a family member who is an employee of the Head Start program, we need to report that. So if you would just share that, we'll be able to report it. It's just a reporting issue. You'll see in Bullet Two, no, Bullet I, it says that it needs to be reported to the secretary that there was a potential conflict of interest. And we've done this several times. There's numbers.
An example, that was Tim Harris was on the board, and Linda Harris works for Head Start. So we just had to report that his wife worked for the program.
We spoke a minute ago about the Policy Council. The Policy Council reviews the budget, the project plan, the school readiness goals, the location of services, and a needs assessment. So do y'all. Y'all do that all the time. And you see, as I report, the monthly reports, it's called the Head Start Monthly Report. You see who, how many children are in, how many meals we've served. And those kinds of reports are required to be given to you every month. Our next slide depicts Polk County specifically. So it's almost $10,000, $10,000, $10 million worth of funding between the federal grant and a non-matching share. We serve 942 children in 23 different locations, 55 different classrooms, and we have 184 employees paid out of that. The last page shows some additional resources. I would like to call your attention to the second one. It says the Head Start Program Governance Reference Book. That one is specifically for you to look at specifically, your goals, responsibilities. And here we are. We're here for you if you have any questions or concerns.
How does Head Start interface or not interface with the state's VPK stuff? Like, if you, if you're in Head Start, is that essentially your VPK? And like, you're counted as... How do those two things work together?
That's a really great question. The state of Florida said, and the law says, that if you are for and live in the state of Florida, you're eligible to receive a VPK certificate. Up through this school year, and it will be also for the next school year for a portion, there was no reporting differences. They were, you can have a VPK certificate, bring it to Head Start, and we could use it as our federal match. Remember a few minutes ago on a slide?
That's what I was going to ask about. So that one point, that federal match is...
Some have VPK.
Some comes from the state through VPK?
Yes.
That would be nice to know how much, what percentage of that? I mean, not the second, but I would be interested in that.
And I think it's shown in our budget reporting. I'll look really closely to make sure that you have that.
Can you explain a little bit about, because I get this question a lot, how students, you know, when they come into VPK or Head Start at that age, sometimes they're not identified or going through the process of being identified with a disability and what the supports look like? And I know it's very different between the two programs. Can you explain the difference and how children are identified in your program and how the connections you make to make sure they receive services?
As the Director of Preschool Programs, I manage, direct, VPK programs, Title I pre-K and Head Start. What we have noted over the years is that many of our children are not identified before opening the front door to the school. So they walk in, and they may have a significant disability, but parents either have not recognized it, or for whatever reason, they don't know about it. So our, once they have a student identification number, they cannot go through Child Find. Child Find must be given to children who do not have a student identification number. Not my rule, but that's the way it is.
That just changed over the summer.
For us.
Okay.
So we have a child study team. Looks a little different in each one of those three programs, but it's basically the same. We have people who are reporting where the child's deficits might be, what the child might need, and we go through the systems. We work very closely with the ESC PK program to ensure the child who has an identified need or a potential identified need go through a systems of child study to determine what that need is and then get them to the right service. So sometimes the child, it may take some time. Ms. Millard, it's not a quick thing. It needs to not be too quick and it needs to not be too slow. There needs to be a just right kind of factor in there. We don't want to ramrod these children through to an ESC identified.
Right.
And we don't want to delay their identification.
I just know the feedback from parents is they've gone to one of these programs, and then they're met maybe one morning with the news that the program, the model, doesn't work for them, and they're not sure where to go. So I think we need to work on, maybe on the website or somewhere, structure for parents to understand if the model doesn't work, what their next step is. But to be met, you know, in the front office to tell you, your child doesn't, you know, this doesn't meet their needs, or they don't qualify, or they'll need more intensive supports, and we don't provide that. As an advocate in the community, I couldn't differentiate between all of these pre-K programs, where to send them. So if there's somewhere on a website that we can get parents' information, because you can imagine, as a parent who may not have accepted or understood the disability is there to be met with that kind of news, we need to be able to, you know, lead them in the right direction for support.
And it's not an easy conversation to hold when the parent does accept the child's identity.
Right.
I full well understand the question because I've been around for a little while. And it seems to me like many times where the child is cognitively made, or emotionally, or in speech, or behavior, whatever the issue is, has acclimated to the child's home. The child's home has been rearranged to meet this child's need. But in a group setting, and mind you, most of these children have never been in group setting. They come to school cold. They've never been in a large group setting. And their needs are exasperated at that point. So it's a really tough conversation. And ESC PK and Carrie and the team have been talking about that and how to make that a smoother transition. Just to throw some problems in, if the child is in Head Start, we have lots of support.
Right.
If the child is in VPK, we have nothing.
And the community does not know that.
And the community doesn't know it. And neither is it remembering that we are a provider, not the manager of VPK.
Right.
So if there's a whole other complexity to VPK.
Yes, I would just encourage that we're mindful of that. And so if there's some way we can explain it, it would have to be done, I'm sure, with language involving all teams. If I was a parent walking into a VPK program, I would understand that you can meet the child's needs, not realizing it might not be the program. And if they can't meet the child's needs, where do you go from there? Because that's came up multiple times. So if we could, I think my input is just if we could help describe that somewhere on a website to families, there has to be written requirements or, you know, written responsibilities that we could share.
Any other questions? This, Ms. Freed, Ms. Barkley, thank you so much. Thank you very much. All right, we're moving to, we've got two informational items here. Our next item coming up is the New Honors Hope Variation Course.
I'm sorry, before we go on, Dr. Exer, be the contact for that, since you're working on it, if we have questions on when that will be implemented or updated.
It and myself or Ms. Freed will work on it.
Okay.
Making sure that we get that information together. Thank you. For the next item we have on the agenda, we want to kind of bring before you a request. And it's kind of an informational item where we're asking to make a request to the state about a course that we would like to make adjustments with. And since we make those requests up the chain, we need to make sure that y'all are informed about what we were going to request.
Excuse me, before we get started, I'm sorry, Ms. Wright, I didn't introduce you. So I want to make sure, I think everybody knows Dr. Exer, Mike Burks. The Mike Lees. Sorry.
I'm Kathleen Wright. I'm the curriculum specialist for physical education. So we just, we will be, with your consent, we'll be sending up a request for an Honors Hope course. So it's basically the same course, but with added rigor for students who would like an accelerated or weighted course. There is one credit of physical education that's required for graduation, and they can meet it a number of different ways. In our district, we use the Hope course to meet that requirement. So we were looking at just preparing a course for, you know, the student who looks for a weighted or a honors level course and adding rigor to that course, adding some project-based learning. But just basically, we added language arts, math, and science standards to the course or the request of this course. And now we'll send it up to the state to approve.
So anytime you want to add a course like that, you have to make, one district has to make that request. And so with us making that request, then we would get other letters of support from other districts. What we have currently is that you'll have some students that are on the Excel path that would actually, I would say, be hesitant to take a traditional Hope course because it's not weighted. In other words, they would try to meet that requirement in other matters. And so really, what this does is gives us that opportunity to meet that student's needs with the additional requirements that Catherine was talking about. So if the board is in support of that, we would start the process to get those letters of support from other districts and then see if that change in the course catalog gets state-loaded.
I know, it says it's one credit. It used to be a half a credit physical education and then a half be made up with something else. So this would be one credit, the whole thing honors.
Correct.
That's awesome.
And it's a whole year, right?
Yes.
My son just took the Hope, current Hope. It was pretty heavily computer-based, felt like the parts that were...
It's a blended learning course, so...
Is that, would that continue?
Yeah, we would adjust some of the standards in both. Mr. Townsend, the reason why that was put together in a blended manner was to actually meet the requirement of having an online course.
Right, right.
So, and again, we're trying to do, make as much, leverage as much of that instructional opportunity as we can. So that's, actually Catherine's been working on that piece to ramp it up too, just to what's in there. So we're consistently trying to revise and improve the system. That's what we're working on.
So you won't be doing away with the current form?
No, it's still be a hybrid course.
Okay, so it would be delivered, the academic parts of it, I guess, would be delivered online. It would be a teacher per se. What's the, what's the difference going to be in the experience of the kids who take it?
If a kid takes it as honors, then they would, you would have two different course numbers, one honors, one's not. But the one that is honors, you'd have additional requirements for that. Still in a blended environment where teachers are involved with it. So we find the blended to be better than just online.
Okay, I guess, what's the on-the-ground experience? How's it going to feel different to the kid taking it? Is it just going to be harder? What's the...
I think there, for number one, there will be more rigor. And again, what we look at is, a course request is just adding standards. So when it goes to the state, this is just going to look like there's more standards in it, language arts, science, and math. Now, when we look at it, visioning in our district, how we would implement it, we would add more components to the virtual piece. So they might have a little different components than the regular course, but they would look at also having some project-based learning that they would do within their course.
What type of project might they do? Like, what might be an example?
An example would be looking at some of our health disparities or looking at risk behavior and analyzing it within their community and then doing a campaign, maybe a multimedia campaign to deter. They, like, if there was an increase in vaping tobacco, which is a real big thing right now. So if they saw increase in their community, then they might do a multimedia project to deter students from, that might be one project-based learning.
And in the current course, the non-honors course, that aspect doesn't really exist? So this would be an addition?
Correct.
I have a question.
Ms. Fields?
I know there are other school districts that's also doing this. What kind of success have they had?
They're not doing it. What we've done is, I've met with them, we've worked together to put this course together. Polk would just be the lead on this. So we've all determined that there's a need for our students to have, you know, a course a little bit more rigor.
So you end up having some students that are those, the accelerated students that are trying to avoid it because it's not honors weight and really it's doing a disservice to them because they don't get this experience and get that knowledge base.
Plus, if they end up moving across the district, we support it as well, like Hillsborough at least and Polk's, I think that's great.
So, Mr. Hill, are you looking for consensus from the board?
Just nod if you're good to go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. Thank you, Dr. Exer. You're looking at item five. Obviously, I believe we've covered that, the open that piece. It's information, so... I believe we're, if we have any additional questions or comments about Head Start, Dr. Exer can answer any of those, but I think we're square away.
Yeah, that's our monthly report.
All right.
So before we get to the board part of the agenda, would we like to take a short break?
Yes, please.
The next item on the agenda is continuation of the discussion related to busing. And I know that we have a number of board members who have some thoughts and concerns, so I will simply open up the floor.
I had a request that went out December 19th that I don't have information returned on, and maybe we don't have it yet, is why. Community feedback, when I'm looking at dollars saved, I would like to see, I had two questions. The FTE transportation dollars that we're taking from charter, are we in the deficit with those? Because we're not doing it completely for free. That is being paid, the money is being exchanged for that service. So I was asking if we're in a deficit for that. And also, Orange County and other districts around us use their public transportation. And I've had conversations in the past with Citrus Connection as far as what they could provide, and they have yet, we have not had a roundtable discussion with our district representatives, with the county, to talk about what the savings could look like if we tried to work something out with our Citrus Connection or our public transit. So I just, there's a lot in the community pushback. I still haven't returned the emails, all of them, from this decision that's gone, or, you know, the announcement that this is the decision that we're going to make as far as pulling the two-mile transportation radius. So I'm just looking for more information, and I think it's a good, you know, representation that we're trying to save dollars everywhere. And I haven't received that information.
Can I start real quick with a question that Lisa's asked me this week, so I understand it on the first one? So are you asking, do we lose money on charter bus service now? Like, if we give somebody, or do we make money because of what they pay?
What we're doing right now, are we operating in a deficit dollar-wise with FTE transportation?
Is it a net gain or a net positive to charter bus service?
And I know it's a broader picture than just the money exchange because it would continue routes and it would make busing available. But we put that into dollars. Because right now, it's reported $135,000, or whatever the report was given to us. And that's very minimal savings compared to taking that kind of transportation away.
Well, let me just speak to big picture.
Right.
Big picture of the state, we're in a deficit of about $12 million. The state gives us about $25 million for transportation. We spend in excess of $35 million. So the state is only funding us a little over 65% of what it costs. So each additional student that we transport in general, we are having to take money out of the classroom to transport them.
So for the chartered schools that are paying us their FTE transportation, it's costing us money to run those routes?
No matter if, no matter if they're giving us all their FTE or not.
Okay.
So that's one reason we want to try to start.
Can you repeat that number real quick? You said the state...
The state gives us about 25. It's been costing us about 35 to 37. And if, and I can provide all the board members a graph that shows
Please.
how, over the last few years, that disparity continues to grow, even though Ross Department is very efficient. It's not because our bus service is not efficient. We're one of the more efficient counties. It's just that it's almost kind of one of those partially funded mandates that we're just not receiving enough money. And we're having to pull money out of classrooms to transport.
And our, I mean, our rural county, you know, is costing...
And there's several negative...
And there's, there's several mega-districts, and we're one of those mega-districts, and we're at the top in efficiency, but what we're finding is that, in efficiency-wise, we, we're doing well, but in service-wise, we're doing poorly. And we're not getting students to school on time so that they have an opportunity to eat breakfast, get into the classroom, and, and start learning. And so to put a dollar figure on that is really extremely tough. And so that's why, you know, taking some of the unmandated transportation services away and focus on those mandated services, we will improve services to our schools and the students, and that's why we're looking at this. It's not more, it's, it's way more than one hundred and thirty-five thousand on paper. That's just saying that if we remove this number, we could save a bus and a driver, or we could condense a route or two or, or three and not have to fill those vacant positions. It's the, it's the service part that is hard to put a figure on.
Ms. Ford?
I have a hard time with the safety of kids under the two miles. I just, I don't really care if there's a sidewalk or not a sidewalk, courtesy busing. I know you have a hard time with it as well, you spoke of it last work session, you have your own kids. I just find it hard to put a dollar amount on their safety, period. That's my feeling.
Right. Now, Rob, correct me if I'm wrong, but don't you, don't y'all do a case-by-case analysis of that?
We do.
Right down to, to it? Do our best to ensure that.
And we do. We, we do a case-by-case. When we have the space available, we will, we will fill those seats because it doesn't impact us negatively. If we have to, like, we have thirty-five hundred students right now. Now, if you removed all thirty-five hundred students, we would see a significant savings because we would not fill vacancies, and we would run less miles, and we would provide a better service to the students that are eligible for transportation. You know, currently, we have about eighteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-four students that are under two miles, that get to school somehow, some, some way. We're not saying that they have to walk. We're only saying it's the parent's responsibility, it's not the district's responsibility, and that's what the statute says. In those cases that we've made in the past, it's been on space available where it's not costing those, the district, but there are, there are circumstances where transportation has been provided in the past due to sidewalks not being in the area. And then sidewalks have been placed in the area, and that transportation service is still being provided, and those are the areas that we're looking at. And we're, we're, we're looking at it from a safety aspect, not, not the state statute of one thousand six point two-three, because there is not one area in the county right now that meets the state statute, one thousand six point two-three hazardous walking conditions because the traffic count is nowhere near where it would, would qualify for state funding. Everything that we do is, is costing the district, I don't know if it's, I don't say it's costing the district money, it's, we're, we're providing services to those that, that aren't eligible for that service, and in, and in turn, and our resources are stretched so thin, and the programs that have been added, we, we're finding it very difficult to get students to school in a timely manner, and that's, that's the issue, really, not the biggest issue.
The second part of...
Ms. Fields, have a question?
I, I think the, the figures issue is educating and making sure they want to understand. And I'm wondering, do we have a frequently asked question sheet that we're doing, I have done, that can answer some of the questions that we have?
Yes, ma'am. We do, and we, and we also, every year, we, we send out the state board rule information on, on students that ride the bus, and then we also send out a Are We There Yet? transportation manual. It's a brochure that provides those parents that are not eligible for transportation resources on where they can find help to, to, to get their child to and from school safely.
When we had discussion at our last work session, one of the questions that I wanted to know was providing continued transportation for the kids at block with road, because that's a very dark area and very much far back off of the main road. And the answer was that, yes, you all will be looking at a case-by-case situation, as Mr. Hill just mentioned. I think it's very important and critical that we understand that, because when the law code was written in, in the paper, I don't believe that was, that was clarified.
Right.
And so I think that we have to make sure that, that we, as a school district, our community relations department, explain that we will be looking at situations on a case-by-case situation.
Yes.
And safety is our number-one priority.
Absolutely.
And, and I just don't think that we did the job of that, in my opinion, and we've got to make sure that people understand that.
And we're attempting to, in communications with the county manager's office, to put this on a committee that is currently created, either the sidewalk committee or the crossing guard committee, that are made up of community members as well as staff members from the school district, from the board of county commissioners, from the sheriff's department, and bring these case-by-case bases to that committee, and so it's not just our department looking at it and say, okay, we feel like it's a safe walking condition, or it doesn't meet hazardous walking, but this committee is looking at all angles of it and saying, okay, is this the best interest of the student, based on, and the resources that we have available?
I think, Ms. Rock, did you have a question?
I just was gonna comment that my gut is to eliminate the charter schools and to keep the two-mile radius, just because, or to keep the under-two-mile. I think when you choose to go charter, that's something that you're also choosing to take over, that I think we have to make sure that we're taking care of our kids, no matter how far they live, so.
Ms. Miller?
I'm still back to the December nineteenth question and this morning. Is our district gonna sit down with public transit and talk about opportunities to transport our students like they do in other districts?
We have in the past. We currently have a contract with them that we have renewed for several years that provides transportation for high school students, that if they can get to a, a transit stop, they, they, they'll use that, and we will continue that, that, those communications.
And speaking to public transit, that, they, there's so much more that they could do, including running our first routes, which would be, which is not stopping at their stops that they already have set, like, working with us, collaborating with us to transport our students. And that conversation has not happened as far, is what I'm being told. So maybe we need to expand that conversation or look into, I mean, Orange County does it. It's not meeting people at bus stops, it's creating routes that will help transport our kids using, using public transit.
And there's a, and, and we will definitely go into the, every angle possible.
Mr. Townsend?
I mean, I think what you're hearing, at least from this Miller, maybe the rest of the board, certainly from me, like, we would like a date certain under which there are discussions in an ongoing way about what the possibilities of transit are. The, the Citrus Connection folks are transit experts, transit ex- experts. You guys are transit experts at the school bus level. Like, they know the access to federal grants, they know what the possibilities are, or they could study, study, study them. You might find there are things you haven't thought about that they haven't thought about that wrap around each other. The only way that's gonna happen is if we are regularly in contact with them. I mean, I, I mean, I, does anyone else want to join in asking the superintendent to direct a regular, a regular meeting on, on this? I mean, because we have a thirty-seven million, million-dollar service that still doesn't cover all the kids we cover, that's only funded at twenty-five million dollars. And especially if they're coming with this eighty percent thing, you know, like, that's, that's, that's a twelve-million-dollar gap at the, and I appreciate you guys, this is the best I've heard this laid out, like, this is, it's much easier to wrap the head, 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 head around. The only way we're gonna address that gap is through being creative, and it's my understanding that the Citrus Connection itself, or, I'm sorry, Pope Transit itself is about to undergo a pretty substantial, like, rethinking of how they do, do things. We need to be in on that. I mean, we, we, we need to, I mean, this is a transit question, it's not just a school bus, school bus question, and so I, I would like a date certain when there are regular meetings that begin to start where ideas are hashed out.
Maybe I can add a little to this, and we have, we have been talking about this for some time now, it's been a long conversation, but I, and I do think there's a certain amount of frustration that there hasn't, that doesn't appear to be any interaction that is, you know, we're in there, we're getting some feedback, and we think we can move in this direction. I, I think it's been more just kind of, you know, minimal contact, minimal discussion, and, and it's, well, we, we can't do that, we can't do this, no serious sitting down and looking at statutes and things of that nature. I, I, I think that's the frustration, and I, what, what I've heard, I'm sure Mr. Townsend has too, from the Citrus Connection folks, is that they can help, they're confident they can help, so...
And we've asked them to revise it. We've asked them to, okay, how can you help us?
Well, but it's gotta be a two-way conversation.
Right, right.
That's what I'm saying. It's gotta be you sitting down with them saying, here's what we need.
Right, right.
And I think that would be helpful, too. Mrs. Fields had a comment.
Okay, so I guess my question would be, and maybe it's changed legally, what can Citrus Connection do as far as establishing routes? Historically, Girls Inc. used to have transportation provided by Citrus Connection Boys and Girls Club, and they did establish route for us. And then federal government came in and said that they could not do that. They could stop at certain bus areas, and they could pick up our kids, but they couldn't literally come to our front door and pick up our girls and go to the schools and then bring them back to Girls Inc. So I guess the question for me is, has that changed illegally? And that would have to be something that Citrus Connection would answer.
Sure.
And those were some of the challenges that we faced with high school, the high school transportation, is they couldn't add a stop in front of George Jenkins High School. They couldn't add a stop, because the closest stop, I think, George Jenkins is three-point four miles away. So we were trying to work with them, is can we add a stop in front of George Jenkins High School? And at that time, that, they could not do that, that they had to be established routes, and then they could use, utilize those services. And there are established routes in, in front of Lakeland Island's Middle School, but we could, we could offset some of the students that ride transit buses, and we have to look at also the parents' perspective on it. So we have to, we have to have input from that, those parents, because if that student is, is eligible for transportation, then we have to, we have to say, okay, this is your options, and, and are you gonna be able to, are they gonna say, yes, we'll put them on a transit bus, or no, we want them on a school bus? And then, and so those are some of the challenges that we faced a few, several years back, and I'd be happy to, to have those conversations again with Citrus Connection.
Ms. cutting in?
Okay, so I agree that we need to address transportation as, as general, obviously. I can see where, personally, as a mom now talking, that it would be okay for my daughter, as a high school child, to be on a transit bus, Citrus Connection, because there's gonna be also adults on there from all parts of the county using it for adult transportation, which is what that is designed for. I can see that, so, but I don't know that I would want my kindergartner on the bus with adults going wherever they're going. So, so my thought would be, maybe start with Citrus Connection, and my thought, and look at the high school component in the county first, because we already have those services up in the northeast area as we sit. So I would say start maybe as we talk with them about the high school piece, and then maybe, this isn't the right word, but it's the only one that comes to mind, reserve the Pope County yellow school buses for maybe middle and elementary, and maybe somehow that way, because I just can't see a kindergartner getting on a transit bus, I don't care where they're going. I, I, but that's me, maybe times have changed for others. But I would see that with the high school level, that would be something that would be tremendous because of the huge number of kids that are being transported as we speak. And then, the second part of that is, some high school students, when you get to a point, they get a car and they drive. So at what point do those kids get off the route, which would enable a few others maybe to get on, and I don't know how you manage that, but I'm sure you do it now, but all of that kind of then opens up some seats. So if you've got a few, you know, middle schoolers that are eighth graders that are willing, then maybe you bump those up and you put them on there, too. Yeah, it's complicated, but I kind of feel like everybody, you're talking kids. When I hear of a child that sat on the bus and missed the stop and didn't know where they, I mean, as a parent, and nobody's different sitting on here, your, your heart just cringes and you think, oh, my gosh, what could we have done differently? And certainly situations vary, and I get that, but I would say start with the older children and then work our way down until that deficit can be, and I'm sure there's gonna be a cost to transport, but they may be already going on a certain route, so adding twenty-five more people to those seats to fill might be helpful. But the only way it can be done is to schedule a meeting with Mr. Phillips, right, and just sit down and try to discuss it and see what the options are, if they can do. I don't know state statutes well enough to tell you what's legal and not, so might need to have an attorney in there with y'all as well.
Everything we're speaking about here is like step six hundred and thirty-two. I want step one, which is like, like, I mean, everything, every specific thing said may be entirely impossible. They may have other things that are, I, I just, transit's a very fluid area, you know, I think what we need is to sit down with them and say, we've got a twelve-million-dollar gap in what the state funds and the service we'd, we'd like to provide, and, and even more than that, how can you help? How can we help you help us? What are, like, and if nothing comes out of it in five months, then nothing comes out of it in five, five, five months, but sit down once, once a month or, or whatever, you know, you know, and come up, and, and don't boil the ocean, you can't, you're not gonna fix it all. Start with one, one plan, one, one, one program that helps twenty kids, and work out the kinks on how we work, work together, build up like that. We, we, we need a relationship with them, not a, not a, not a distinct solution that we're gonna solve here. It, it has to be, I mean, you guys are the professional staff, they're the professional staff. Help us, you know, work on this gap.
And Ms. Ford, let me get to you in just a moment, but I think when we did this before, they came to us, and they said, here's what we can do to help, and, and maybe at that time, that really wasn't a great fit for us. I think it would be helpful if we went to them and said, hey, this is what, these are our needs, can we talk about it? And I think that's a good place to start. So I think that's, that may be helpful. And that, too. Ms. Ford?
I wanna go back to what Ms. Field said about communication, because I, I've had one concerned parent blow my email up, and I'd like for you to maybe address that, because if you could pass that all the way over. She is...
Is this Ms. Hoffman?
I have no idea what her name is, but, you know, that lack of communication is why misinformation gets out, and there's been a chance since in the middle of December to address this parent's concerns, so, and it is an individual case-by-case, like you said, so there's one case right there that we could address.
Ms. Miller?
Yeah, I just had one other thing, talking to different districts, and I know that's what you do as well across the state, and this morning I was on the phone with Pasco, I think it was a Pasco representative, and this is kind of progressive, and, and we would have to look at it further, but they're, at least on the elementary level, I agree, you know, we need to keep it within Pope County, but what they've done, instead of having ESC buses, like, that might just carry a few children across the county, they make them buses, they're bus routes, so the neighborhood rides with that bus.
You're the same.
And so they maximize the space, and so, okay. So I'm just thinking, trying to find out what other districts are doing, and that's where I heard of Orange County's, you know, public transit as well as South Florida, which might run differently. I mean, they might have more opportunities because of their size and, and how they're laid out, but thank you for continuing that conversation and just looking for those ways. The community, the community's feedback is the two-mile radius is too dangerous for, for anybody to accept.
And, and I agree with that as a, as a, as a father, and I, I think I had a conversation in the past where I would love to transport every student that we had, because the safest means of transportation is a school bus, and that's the honest God truth. They're built to transport students, and that's, and, and they've been modified... And that's the honest God through. They're built to transport students and that's, and, and they've been modified. And they are the safest means of ground transportation there is. But we know we can't do that. And the statute, as a board, we could, you could, you could vote and say, okay, I want, um, anyone that lives within one mile of this, of the, the school to be transported, but the transportation costs will increase. And so we've gotta try to find that gap. And so what, what I'm willing to do, or what I will vow to do is reach out to Mr. Phillips, um, this afternoon and see if we can't start doing a round robin table as soon as possible.
Thank you. Yeah, so, and what I'm hearing from the board is that they, they would like for us to engage, the district to engage in a conversation with Citrus Connection about what we might be able to do. And then, Ms. Bill, a report periodically. Um, I, if I might, I have some comments. I, I know that we've heard this from Ms. Wardney, Ms. Reynolds, Ms. Miller. And I'm gonna, I'm in agreement with that. We, this is of great concern to me. We have community schools. We know from the governor, the Department of Education, members on the Board of the Department of Education, even our state, our state legislators. All we hear from them is school choice. Well, I have no problem with that. I think that's just fine, but that means transportation, right? That's code for transportation. We have community schools. And there's a reason for that. Why don't we just build one huge school in the middle of the county and transport everyone there, right? So we have community schools for a reason. Why is a building somewhere better, a better outcome for a student than a building somewhere else? I mean, I feel like the state's missing the whole point of education. Why aren't we working with our local communities to make sure that we're providing the quality education to every community, so that we don't, so that we can cut back on a huge cost to the state in terms of transportation? I mean, I have no problem with choice. There, there's a child in a school, they don't like it there. They wanna go somewhere else, fine. But we seem to be absolutely bent on moving kids in and out of schools, in and out of districts. That's a challenge for us. And I think as a board, we have to find a way to communicate that to our state legislature. That's just not a, that's not a recipe for success. But in the meantime, I, so there, and I'm not, I, you, everyone here knows that I'm, I'm not opposed to charter schools. I have no issue with charter schools whatsoever, but I'm in agreement with Ms. Reynolds. Part of that is, if you take on a charter school, you take on all aspects of it, including transportation. So I'm, and there's one board member speaking. I'm good with saying to charter schools, you've gotta provide transportation. It's a choice issue. But, um, I, I do have issues with the two, two-mile radius thing, or the two-mile, whatever it is, walking distance for, especially for young children. I don't care if, you know, I mean, older children maybe, but for the young children, I think we're, I think that's problematic for us as a district. I, I just, I believe we have to find a way to address that. This is my take on it. So Robyn, I'm, I'm hearing this from hearing from the board. We want discussions with the, with the Citrus Connection. But in addition to that, we'd like to continue the discussion about how we help those kids. I think I'm here in this for the board that live within the two-mile radius. Um, is that fair?
This is for me. But, and I know you have all this that you've sent and everything. But again, I think it's a matter of communicating the safe routes, the, you know, and getting people's inputs and, and that case by case basis. I didn't mean to put you on the spot about that email, but, you know, this is the kind of thing that maybe you could direct her to, or him, whoever it is. You know, but we have got to give that information to people, as Ms. Fields said, because we have it, but nobody else seems to have. Does that make sense?
Uh, Ms. Fields?
Okay, so I, I sent Tom Phillips a text message while we were talking. And the question that I asked him is, are we now able to establish school routes, transporting students to and from school? As you know, Girls Inc. had to stop our own transportation because, um, y'all had to stop helping us with our routes due to federal regulations. His response was, we cannot do routes for schools only. They have to be open to the public. In other words, students have to mix with the general riders, like Coates currently. The, um, we need to get the school board staff to give us the student data on yellow bus riders so we can see what we can do to take on the riders on our routes that they may not need to transport. And finally, if the data show we could be of significant assistance, the runs of the first buses could change to accommodate first bell. And so I think it's just a matter of doing what you said you're gonna do, is reach out to him and y'all start having conversation. But going door to door is not anything that can be done.
Thank you, Ms. Fields. Ms. Reynolds?
Do we have a fact sheet on the information that you sent us on the website that we can direct people to?
Um, no, no, not that I'm aware of.
Could we get something to, you know, this is why it's changing, this is just a kind of a facts and questions that?
We do have an FAQ, but, um, now we're talking about charter schools only, uh, is that, because that's the way I, I, I feel right now that.
I think for both, just to kind of, you know, as, as people are calling us, for us to be able to say, you know. I mean, we can give them your email and phone number, but I think it'd be a lot more, this information that you sent us is gonna answer a lot of questions that, and it's streamlined, that we're all sending them to the same place of, this is the information that we all have and this is, we can send it to you.
And so to notify the charter schools, um, I can move forward with that in a letter to notify them, to give them this time to start making preparations. And then, under two-mile, um, students that we have already identified, that we will hold off on until, uh, we do further research or establish the committee where they can look at those as well.
And one final note on, on just the, the communication, because this was really an eye opener for me today. I would include, right, the start of everything, that it's a thirty-seven million dollar job to transport the kids. We transport today, which isn't as many as we'd like to. And we're funded at twenty-five million. That's a twelve million dollar gap. Like, that, 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 people can understand that. I mean, we're, you know, instead of us cutting a service everybody's entitled to, we're, we're holding on to as much service as we can by, by, like, thinking in terms of, that's a really helpful frame. And it's very easy to say. So I would urge you to include that in your communications right from, right from the start.
And add to that the miles that we drive. I think that is stunning. If that doesn't get somebody's attention, they're just not paying attention. Ms. Fields?
Mr. Bima has come in on this subject. Jason does an excellent job sharing that information. And I know you have that, because he shared with me. So I think you need to make sure that the board understands that, that you, when you leave a presentation, you share a lot of that data. And that data can be provided to the community as a whole so they can understand it.
Yes, ma'am. We'll, we'll work together to provide a fact sheet that's clear, simple, and breaks down the points of why we're discussing this.
And just to provide clarification, Mr. Davis, as a board, are we in agreement that we want to notify the charter schools?
Yes.
Okay, so we move forward with that.
For that case.
And the under two miles, we just will wait until, um, we have further information.
Can you, can you further discussion?
Just, just also, if the state decides to fund fifteen million dollars a year more, we'd be happy to add the charter school back. You know, I mean, like, that, so, you know, that's, you hear that, Kelly?
Because you need to keep in mind, out of the twelve charter schools, you have four that serve the community with the most vulnerable kids who need specialized transportation. So.
And Achievement Academy, um, is a, you know, has three locations. They're, it's gonna be tough for them to do their own transportation. So maybe working with, um, with Citrus Connection and Tom Phillips, they, they may be able to provide a solution through Polk Transit Authority or some, something. Um, because that, that school will have difficulty.
And there's waiting lists for that school because we have a hard time serving them. And so that's, you have to take it.
Do we wanna consider, like, carving out the special needs for the time being?
You have to understand that's the community that you're gonna hear back from the most, because there's limited options for those children. And they, you know, taking those options from them. Victory Ridge also trans, which they transport all over the county, which they might have to, and I've talked to, and I think he's reached out to their director, um, trying to solve their issue. But out of the twelve, that's four of them.
Can, can we invite them to get into our roundtable with the, I mean, if, if we're gonna cut them off, at least, or at least, at the origi, like, of the original meeting, maybe?
I would encourage to, I would encourage us to do that. I don't, the director of Victory Ridge is aware of it already, because he contacted me. I don't know if the director of, of Achievement Academy is, is aware of it.
So, um, that's, that's some of our challenging transportation, uh, and was just causing longer routes and, and getting the students to school later, um, and to increase the cost. So, understanding the special needs that they have, um, it, it, those schools will still have a significant impact on, on our improving services, um, in, within the county. So if we keep them.
So you're saying that they could be invited to that roundtable conversation to see what Citrus Connection are?
Yeah, I think that would be.
And you're still offering them buses and you're gonna, are we offering the buses, um, that are still serviced their children?
Surplus buses.
Well, they'll be fixed, they'll be affixed with, are we gonna offer wheelchair buses to these schools that carry students in wheelchairs? Or they can pay for the modifications?
I'll have to look at the, um, the entire surplus fleet and see how many, uh, are available and how many of the, the needs are that we have, a certain number. And I'm not sure how many of those are surplus buses, but, um, so in some, some instances, we may not have enough of the buses for them. But we will, we'll help them, we'll guide them where they could get a good bus, um, you know, from, from a vendor, if we don't have it.
We just need to be very, I mean, we're talking about medically fragile, so I just think people need to be aware of that.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the fact that in our conversations, you're very thoughtful, very compassionate and understand about working with those specific issues and making sure that we, you know, we've given lengthy notice, plenty of notice so that we can come alongside them and support them in the transition.
Any, any other comments about buses? Get here. Thank you. Thank you, Phil. Thank you, Davis.
Hi, Mr. Davis.
Uh, in new business, um, before we get to board comments, apparently Mrs. Sellers was serving on the Polk Academy's advisory board. She's been doing so for some time. And they would, and they respectfully requested that a board member, uh, take that seat. One of the board members take that seat.
I would really like to, if nobody else.
Do we have anyone else who would like to do that? Congratulations. Yes, um, uh, Ms. Worthington, would you reach out to them, let them know that Ms. Reynolds will be serving next? Thank you, Ms. Reynolds. Okay, board comments. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Fields?
I wanted to go back to the discussion that we had before we, um, added two new board members concerning master board training. They talked about getting that done after we, um, were able to see who the new board members would be. We knew we were gonna have at least two. And, um, I don't remember, and maybe this system can help with that, if we already paid for that, the master board training.
We were reimbursed.
We were reimbursed.
Yes, ma'am.
So I took the liberty to go on the website and to make copies, especially for the new board members, so that they can see what the master board training looks like. And then maybe at the next work session, we can talk a bit about it. And hopefully everybody's gonna be in agreement that this is something that we, um, we wanted to do. And everybody's gonna be in agreement that we do it.
Ms. Worthington, could you add that as agenda, I don't think next week, next work session?
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other board comments? Yes, Ms. Bill?
Thought we were going around. Sorry. I just wanted to address an article that was written over the weekend, um, the Ledger covered, only because of the response and how overwhelming it has been. The Ledger covered an article based on my experience in ESC and the services that we've had over the years and the difficulty some parents have in navigating our system. I can tell you that there, they had over four thousand impressions on that article alone within two days. I had hundreds of shares and hundreds of messages I can't even return on my social media and my email. So what that tells me is, while all of us bring our own expertise to this board, we've never had someone sit here with an ESC background, which might make some nervous, or just the fact that it's kind of an area that's not been addressed on its own for a long time. Um, and as school choice grows, as Mr. Wilson has talked about, and it is growing, um, our typical schools are left with more socioeconomic needs, more behavior needs, and more students with disabilities who may not be able to make those choices for all the schools here in Polk County that provide that. So it's critical that we understand that, that we have a great, we have pockets of excellence. We have pockets of crisis to meet that excellence as well. And we have to understand that it's, it's what's happening in our district. A lot of it has to do with communication to parents and how to navigate the system, our staff that's reaching out to me. It's, I think we have a lot of areas that we could look at for improvement. I've been doing this for over a decade, and I know you get tired of hearing that. I've been, I've tired, grown tired of, of trying to put out fires as they, they occur. This is a systemic issue that I think we all can recognize just based on, um, the feedback from the community and, um, what we hear that we need to work on. And it's not directed at one person. We have phenomenal staff with Dr. Steinecke. This is a huge county with needs, um, just as great. So as an agenda item, I would like to suggest, um, having an outside entity come in to review our policies and procedures and our implementation of services, support services, um, or have that discussion. Because it is so grand. Um, the, the, the need from the very mild support to the very significant support is fifteen thousand plus students, um, times that, community members. And out of all of the feedback just from that one article, none of it was negative about them pursuing this as an issue because people feel that it is. Um, so I would like to encourage us to recognize that and work together with our staff to maybe bring in something or someone to help us with solutions for those issues.
So it's, I think what I'm hearing is that you'd like for us to bring in a consultant, Ms. Miller?
And/or, I'm looking at what other districts have done. Uh, we have in the past run in a consultant to, to show us how to bill Medicaid and, and specific issues. I think we need to bring in a consultant, a broader.
We, we've entered into a discussion on doing that, Ms. Miller. We'll be bringing, uh, some of that information to the board. You know, where we can bring somebody in. Uh, we're already looking at that phase, so we'll be glad to bring that to you as soon as the superintendent gets out all that really shorted up. Uh, just before we get, like you said, an outside eye, to look at from top to bottom what we've got going on in ways that we can continue to grow and improve our services. Uh, so I'm thinking probably within the next forty-five days, that should come to, uh, a little more granular detail where we can do that. And we appreciate that feedback on it, and we'll be doing that.
Thank you.
I think that's definitely something that's, uh, you know, behind it.
We had that process in place, Dr. Steinecke, already kind of set the ball in motion after Thanksgiving. Uh, we just had to wait until, uh, we got some more details on, of what it would look like and the cost of it. But, uh, we should be able to have probably some draft, uh, language to you. We gotta do a contract, and so that takes a little while. But, uh, they've assured us that they will expedite that. And in bureaucratic terms, that means that within about forty-five days, we should be able to get something together. So, we're working on it.
Ms. Fields?
My memory serves me correctly, we did this when I first came on the school board. We had someone that came in from outside and looked at the ESC department and made some very strong recommendations. And those recommendations were implemented. Uh, so this is not anything new.
No, ma'am, it's not. But I do think that, uh, as a.
I'm not saying that it shouldn't get done. I'm just saying this is not anything that we have not done before.
Right. I think that the way we're looking at it, uh, we talked about it at length at Cabinet and with our department, uh, as a whole. It's that, uh, you know, from time to time, the, the county has grown so big, our footprint is so big. And the question still, uh, we gotta ask ourselves from time to time whether it's an external audit, uh, whether it's an instructional group like LSI with Marzana, is. is, are we implementing and doing the best we can what services that we have for our students? So, anytime we're in this situation where we're continuing to try to improve, and I think that's what we're all about, is improving services for all students, then it behooves us to take a step back and say, hey, look, let's get out of the weeds with this deal and have somebody come in from the outside and really give us some feedback on this. Maybe there are some areas that we can strategically continue to improve, so as we continue to look at that. So, the point, we'll be able to bring those recommendations to you, but also bring a contract, like I said, within probably about 45 days, we should be able to get that to you. Our goal is, what the superintendent has asked is our goal is by the time this is complete, before the school year is complete, and then we would have the strategic steps during the summer actually mapped out to roll in for next school year. Yes, ma'am.
And I was around for the community push for that about 12 years ago, and it was done, and we've had so much policy change and state changes, but also some of that stuff still was not implemented with fidelity just because it was so grand. So, I think it's a good idea to have, especially with the new statutes from the DOE, to have someone come in and, because it's a funding issue, and we know that already, but we're gonna have to be creative and see what we're doing with the dollars we already have to improve that. So, I appreciate that work. Thank you.
So, does that satisfy your concerns, Ms. Miller, that the superintendent's gonna follow up on that?
Sure.
Okay. Ms. Fields?
I just wanna make sure if I understood, I'm not saying we should not do it. I'm just wanting to make sure that it's understood that we have done something similar before. So, it is something that we should do, and it seems like it's getting a little bit twisted. So, I just wanna make sure that that's understood.
No, I think, I think-
Very supportive.
Absolutely, and I think, I think that's understood. I think what Mrs. Miller's saying is that there-
I'm not speaking with Ms. Miller, but thank you.
I was just gonna say, it's actually a routine practice for many districts, large districts, over the years to continually do those types of reviews. So, we're at a point where we've made a lot of strides and a lot of changes, but we're at that kind of level where, okay, we're ready to go the next step. What is that advice that we would have either from a state level, a national level perspective in comparison to other districts? So, it's, it's a perfect time to be doing it, and having done it 10 or 12 years ago, it's kind of a cyclical thing that a lot of special education departments and districts, states do, so it's a routine thing.
And now that we, you know, have solidified leadership, our superintendent position allows us to get to those things that systemically take time, energy, and effort to do. Something Ms. Burke can definitely do for us, but.
Ms. Wharton?
Okay, so this is only my second work session, so I've just made a couple of observations and just trying to get some stuff done. My first and foremost concern is that each individual school site, I just have felt that 21 social workers for our county is irresponsible. I feel like we need a social worker at every single school, and I don't know how to do that. And I know you're gonna say we don't have the money and all this other stuff, but, you know, I want that as a goal and also as a mental health professional in each school. Because unless you've been at a school like Stanball and you see what goes on in those hallways, you might change your mind as to what we hire here in the district office versus what we have boots on the ground. You know, so I wanna put that out there, and I know that in our training over in Tampa for new school board members, it talked about staying in your lane. That was the name of the PowerPoint that we were introduced to. And I don't know what lane I'm in, but I am in the lane for kids and students and parents and teachers, and I feel like a social worker at each school is imperative. Somebody that we, you know, back in the day, I keep talking about that. We had troon officers just for our school, and they went out and checked on our kids. You know, I think we could alleviate a lot of problems. And second concern, obviously, is a shortage of instructors that are qualified and substitutes to, you know, that wanna come to your school. I spoke with Mr. Hill earlier about this code of conduct, you know, and we talked about it a little bit. The first four steps for tardies are the same as vaping, tobacco, everything else. This is one of the reasons I think we can't keep people, because nothing happens to these folks, like in their classrooms. You know, just like the hard corners, that was not communicated. I know I went to a training or a, there at Bill Duncan, the operation of the fire alarm. That was not part of what they talked about. It's not even in their notes, the hard corner. So, when teachers reach out to me, I have no idea what they're talking about because I wasn't told. You know, it makes us not look real bright, to be honest. So, you know, all of these things add up to, I think we need to look at an advisory board made up of real teachers, real students that, you know, have real solutions. And I'd be glad to head that up. I don't know how it operates. I don't know what needs to happen if I'm out of my lane or if I'm passing somebody in another lane, but I just wanna get that out there, and, you know, if it has to be an agenda item, I'd love to put it on there if I'm even allowed. And then the last thing that I've noticed, it seems like Mrs. Usher's department, she's in charge of everything from paper towels to real estate. As I was introduced to all of y'all's, what you do, you know, that first week I was here, I was like, as soon as I got to her, I just looked at hers and I was like, holy moly, you know, I don't know how you do that, you know? Paper towels to real estate, and it's just beyond me. That, I believe, needs to be looked at, you know? It's just so much for one person to be in charge of and do it effectively. And then the last thing is I wanna check on being on the calendar committee, make sure that I'm the one that's nominated myself. And then I have another teacher interested. Her name is Patrice Bonner, B-O-N-N-E-R. And that'll do it for Sarah here. Oh, no, one more thing, sorry. Notice I use every little bit of space because we don't waste as a classroom teacher, right? So, these came from Stanball. I hope that was allowed. Public comments tonight, is that gonna be available or?
Always.
Okay, 'cause I know somebody said something about we probably won't be able to speak at the roundtable this evening.
Well, we need to, that's a good question, and what I wanted to address when-
It was your turn?
It was my turn to clarify that, but certainly we can do that.
All right.
Couple things to address for this morning. Made a note in terms of getting back to you in regards to the calendar.
Yes, sir.
In regards to the hard corners, sent an email to school-based leadership today, basically analyzing how the implementation has rolled out. Strongly feel that it could have done a better job of communicating that, getting the communication. Kind of got the rollout ahead of the communication piece, so it has created quite a bit of misunderstanding and a lack of knowledge about the why, starting with the why are we doing it, and then understanding the importance of it. And so, we're working to remedy that, and certainly we'll always continue to work to improve our communication.
I have a question about that. I have a question, Mr. Hill, or chairman for W superintendent about that. Is the board, because I'm also newly elected, for those who don't remember, is the board given safety updates? Because being an arm into the community, we're the first ones who got the pictures texted to us or the parents' emails, you know, and I had no idea what they were speaking of. So, since that, since Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Act is a very new piece of legislation, and we're gonna be implementing things probably now for a while, is the board given those kinds of safety updates of what will be happening periodically, or how does that work?
Yes, there are, through, just, it works that way through the process, different departments. Certainly in this case, it would be safe schools. I think the issue this time was, I think, the board had a sense, some sense of it, but not to the depth perhaps, of the piece that was being implemented in terms of specifically the hard corners piece. And so, when we give those updates and when we give that information, one of the things that, that I've noted that we just need to really be diligent about making sure that we get the communication timely and make sure it's clear and make sure it's got the depth that it needs.
Can I add a comment to that?
I think too, there is, and Wes, correct me if I'm wrong, in statute, we are allowed to have safety meetings about our security plan that are in executive session enclosed, which is part of why we did-
Right.
-the individual meetings at Bill Duncan, because we don't want all of our safety plan to end up in the ledger. Not that, which is probably not a popular thing with parents, but at the end of the day, it's about keeping your kids safe, and we don't want to tell the next active shooter, this is where we are.
I mean, I was hoping they were closed, but I think it brought more media attention when nobody knew, teachers had no idea. Maintenance staff said they were chosen to decide where they went. Like, there was so much, because we didn't get the message out ahead of it, it created more around that subject.
Right.
I found out socially at AFSMI's Christmas party. That's how I found out. Will you pass that to Mr. Hill? Maybe somebody who might need it.
I'm sorry, I just wanted to-
No, thank you. And that's correct. There are certain things we can disclose. There are certain things we cannot disclose because at the end of the day, we have been and will always be working diligently to ensure that the safety and well-being of our students and staff are our first priority.
Yes, Ms. Hall?
Basically, I just wanted to kind of reiterate what Ms. Reynolds just said about it being a closed session for the reasons that she just stated, but I also wanna say, I think maybe some were communicated better than others because I know prior to you all coming on the board, Ms. Miller and Ms. Portman, each of the school board members were invited to Bill Duncan, and they did a very thorough and in-depth tour of all the changes that they were gonna be implementing. Couldn't share it, but it was, it was given to us. And so, the question about hard corners for some of us was not anything that we were not aware of. And so, I don't know if you all had that same tour, if you had an opportunity to ask questions or not, but I know that we did, and there were questions that I was able to ask.
I did, I did take that tour. You did. And there was no mention of hard corners. That's why I brought the thing I got there.
Thank you for that.
Yeah, and I have, just very briefly, Ms. Capazella, I'll get to you. I, you know, I think what, it seems to me that there's a balance between what we can share with the public, but also what should be shared with the teachers in the classroom, so they know what's going on. I'm not sure how we fix that, but somehow, Mr. Hill, that could be a challenge for you to figure out what that balance is so that our teachers at least are aware of what's happening and not off guard. Ms. Capazella, please.
Yeah, I sent an email to the superintendent because my phone has been blowing off the hook about this and asked for immediate training and some pieces to be put in place. For example, Ms. Portman just brought up the fact that some of the teachers feel that the corners that have been chosen are not the safest corners. We're questioning whether there was any training or expertise about how to choose the corners, the amount of room that some of them have in the corners. And so, I'm gonna forward that email to you all so that you can see what I communicated with the superintendent because this is a very large concern, and including the emotional security of the students who are facing this omnipresent peace in their classroom, you know, that some teachers are concerned about, you know, the peace. And the fact is that we have to roll things out better when we're doing these types of things. Teachers walked into the classroom, and you'll see in the email, and some people didn't even know what that was on the floor. So, you know, it happens. You just have to find out how to roll things like this out better.
I just have one other comment as far as what we did to mark those corners and things in the rooms. If teachers are talking to other teachers in other districts, there are districts that have chosen not to use the material that we've used. They've allowed the teachers to identify corners on their own to kind of keep it more of a secretive kind of, you know, safety concern. So, the messaging would have to include the why we have chosen this, this method because it's not the same in each district. Charlotte County is not doing it. Collier County is not doing it. There are several that have identified them in the classroom. They are not marking them as we have marked them. So, I think the messaging may help with that.
And I have to wonder, I've not, I've not been a teacher in K through club, but I have to wonder if we communicated with or, did a better job communicating with teachers, if we, if it would be, if they then are capable of helping the students with understanding what that's about.
Well, you know, a follow-up to what Ms. Miller just said, that would be great if you didn't have, you know, a sub in the same room, a different sub in the same room three days a week out of five, you know, and the turnover. There needs to be like something that, just like a tornado drill instruction, you know, we have, that's something that's posted in the room, like we're in an emergency folder where you can have access to it, and if you can read, you can, you know, which I'm not sure some, but, you know, it's just a big folder and it would say, you know, northwest corner designated safe zone or whatever. I mean, we have policy and procedure for all of that, and it would have been-
And I can forward the emails from teachers that were told to explain it, but not how to explain it. And so, if, you know, this is gonna be something that's mandated to them to do, especially for elementary. Everything else, we've given them fun, you know, kind of promotional, you know, this is how you explain tragedy and these kinds of things to children. But when we put the things on the floor without telling them what they were and then said, explain it to these kids, you know, we have to balance that.
Or no explanation.
Right.
There was, you know, it just depends, I think, on the leadership at the school site, how that came across. That's my opinion, but.
And one of the things I also heard was you have an interest in an advisory board?
Yes.
So, Ms. Worthington, if we could add that to the next work session agenda to discuss that, we'll give the superintendent an opportunity to think that over and maybe we can discuss that with her at that time.
Is that a school safety advisory board?
No, that would be just like, we could have avoided all of this had we had a teacher-student advisory board that we went through and they would say, oh, we would need directions for that.
Um. Okay. Any other comments?
I have one question, matter of order. I, when we go through these consultative agreements and these other contracts that have been signed that don't have to get board approval, if we have, I don't know how often they come to us, is it maybe quarterly? If we have questions on some of these, because some of them don't give great descriptions of what will be used, do we direct that at the time for the renewals, like do you just direct that to the superintendent? Example of, one of my schools has a giant billboard that we earn money from, and I just had questions because some of it is, I've seen ads up there that I probably wouldn't put on a school campus. So, I don't know if we have, my question would be like, do we have input on what they're allowed to advertise? But these are the things I find in these consult, these different agreements, or one of our services contracts where it's described the person will be an online facilitator. It doesn't give a good description of actually the operation. So, if someone was to pull this, I as a board member would like to know what this person is responsible for so I could answer those questions. When is it, do we just ask that as they come out quarterly? Because we would have no idea these are happening until-
Until you see them.
Right.
Mr. Hill, I'll let you address that. How would you, how would you like that handled?
I'll take advisement from the superintendent.
Okay, thank you.
And see how she would, definitely. Those are the quarterly reports that have, you have questions or need clarification from.
Right.
I mean, I, I think if it's a, if it's a question about a contract, an element of a contract, I think that's okay to reach out directly to whoever is responsible for that, but if it's related to, if it's just a question, if it's suggesting to change something, that probably should go to the superintendent.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? I, I just have a question about the expectation for this evening's meeting. This is, was identified as a work session, not a school board, and we don't typically invite public comment at work sessions. I understand that that was one of the things that we wanted to do, and certainly no problem with that. Our current policy limits public comments to three minutes, so we have to keep that in mind because that's our current policy. Certainly, we can change that, but that's where we are with that now. Is that what you had in mind, Ms. Wharton here?
I have, I just felt like some folks said, reached out to me and said they didn't wanna waste their time because they felt like they would not be heard, and I wanted to make sure that when they show up, when I've invited them to something, that they could be heard.
Okay, and is our current policy sufficient to do that, in your opinion?
I would, I would not know.
Okay, so-
My wand doesn't work in here like it did in class.
We're gonna test that and see how that works? Okay. Okay. And then the second part of, of this is to just generally discuss issues of concern with the school, the school issue. Okay. Yes.
I have a suggestion. Um, thinking about this, when I had originally, um, replied to Susan's email to us about dates, um, when this date came up, I was just assuming, and that's my fault, that it would be, we would.
Intimate.
Huh?
Go ahead.
That it would be, um, you know, like now, we're going to adjourn this, maybe go grab some lunch and then go hang and talk. That was me. I thought it was more of a, let's, a relationship builder is kind of the way I first heard it from Billy. And I thought, oh, that's great. Not realizing that this was meaning to have like another work session essentially just after hours for those who can't come during the day. So my thought is, if that is what we are looking to do, that was different than what I envisioned. So consequently, I can't make it tonight because I'm chairing a fundraising committee, um, at my daughter's school tonight from six to nine. So I can't come. But I got to thinking, what if we, we have two work sessions a month. So we meet, let's say, we meet twice a month. One to have a work session followed by a board meeting, attorney-client, all of that. And then we have the today's meetings that are scheduled nine to 12 typically. What if that, this one, the second meeting of the month, would be an evening meeting? And then it would be in here, they could sit back there. And then we can say, certainly if you want to ask someone like Ms. Capazella or whoever to come and make a comment, we could then address it that way. Then it would, because to me, to have a work session, nine to 12, and then come back tonight from six to eight, it's a little difficult. I mean, I will do it. But had I not had a previous commitment. So, and I misunderstood what we were doing. So, but going forward, I thought, well, she's right. Maybe people do want to come after five, after four, whenever you're going to tell, whatever time. And we do a four to six or five to seven, it doesn't really matter to me. And then we hear comments and things and address it. So that would be one board meeting, you know, the one with the board meeting stays as is because we have to get ready all day basically for five. But maybe the second one would be an evening one. Just the thought, don't know how it impacts staff. Haven't done all that. Just going to throw it out there as an idea.
Ms. Reynolds?
I think the comment, because we had talked about that last time, but the comment was that staff would have to be, if we did the full work session, that staff would then have to be here from six to eight because we were wanting to not start it before six. If I, I may have been incorrect on that. No one's.
I think, I think that was the recommendation.
That, that that was the concern to, in December.
Right. And now we're doing twice. The, the staff has to be here in the morning and they have to come back at night. So why make them do twice?
Is staff coming tonight?
Well, somebody has to record it.
Mrs. Fields?
I'm going to, I'm going to back type what Ms. Cunningham just said when this was brought up. I mean, a month ago, months ago, initially, it was just wanting to establish relationships and get to know each other better. And then nothing discussed would, uh, end up being policy, um, making or anything like that. And then, uh, at the last, uh, discussion, everything kind of changed. And then you suggested, Mr. Wilson, that we, um, dismissed the work session right now. And then, as Ms. Cunningham had mentioned, maybe take a break and come back and then have the open discussion meeting.
Right.
And so I just think there, there needs to be some level of what are we going to do and what's expected so that everybody can understand it. I'm not going to be able to be here tonight. I have other commitments as well.
And, and thank you for those comments. And there will be no policy decisions made, of course. Anything that is, in my, from my perspective, anything that comes out of this meeting this evening that's relevant will be, will be added to a future work session agenda for us to discuss further. Um, but I think what I heard was that folks wanted to talk, expand the discussions about a number of school district issues. They just wanted an opportunity to talk about that. Ms. Fortney indicated that she wanted it open to, uh, to guests to come and, and offer their comments and tell. So we're really trying to meet both those objectives.
Well, that was like our very first board meeting when this was brought up, I believe, when we were sworn in. And, uh, I thought it started with that the public didn't have access to, like, the meeting ti, like, most people are working right now. And I, I thought that's what it stemmed from. Maybe it didn't. I don't know. It was kind of a blur. But, you know, in a nighttime session would allow those folks to get off work. And we're talking about your stakeholders, like your students and your parents and your staff. You know, that, that's all I was trying to say.
We're kind of talking about two different meetings because when we, when I, we talked about it when we were sworn in, you have to have an agenda item here to speak. It has, it's already laid out, kind of what we're doing. But we just, but, and this group voted at the time to have an additional meeting to be able to talk about subject matter, maybe without, um, having those agenda items. Adding the public was kind of another caveat to it because what this, you know, some of our city commissioners do is they have those meetings. The public is invited, but they're not, that's not the focus of the meeting. The focus of the meeting is for the board members, not so, not really social setting, but of the board members to be able to, um, expand on district issues amongst each other and meeting sunshine requirements.
In the public.
In the public. Um, where they either could, they could either view and come with questions at board meetings, or you give them the opportunity to speak at the end. We have no timer in this room, so the facilitation of that would be something else we'd have to consider.
Yeah, and, and you're absolutely correct. Currently, we do allow for an opportunity for folks to come and speak to the board. So that, that opportunity is already presented to, to the public. I assume that the, the idea here was to allow them to do so in a more relaxed environment. Uh, and there could be some value to that. I don't know. We'll, we'll have to see. Uh, we, I think we can figure out the timing piece. Um, but, so that's kind of where we are. And, and I think we all agree that it was a test to see how that goes and see where we're going. But I want to make it abundantly clear, there are no decisions that could be made. This is strictly conversational and, and anything that needs to come before the board will, will come, come before the board in a future work session or board meeting, this case maybe.
So is someone going to be here to take minutes?
Mrs. Worthington, we have worked with the staff here to ensure that it's recorded. And then Mrs. Worthington has agreed to trans, uh, transcribe the minutes.
Okay. So y'all don't think the thought of having a work session in the evening accomplishes the same thing?
No, I think.
Down in the future so that we're not tying up staff for two meetings on the same day? I, I mean, really.
I like that idea too.
You know, then that way you've got that second one is always the evening meeting. So it's always out there. Everybody knows, not the first meeting, but, because the first meeting at five is the board meeting of the month and the second, or however we do it. And the second one would be an evening work session here in the same, as we discussed. And, and we could finish our, whatever we had to get through, let's say up through now. Let's say this was now 10 to 12. So let's say it's now seven, 7:15. Now you would open it up and say, are there some folks that need to come and address the board regarding specific things? But I would say though, having done this for years and having done this before, we need to be cognizant somewhat of time because you're going to get people just to talk because they have the microphone and they can. And we'll be here very, very late. And I don't mind hearing issues that someone is prepared and they're truly speaking from the heart and we need to hear it. So I don't know how we manage that, but I think that's a part of this process. That's all I'll say.
Mr. Wilson, maybe we can add that to the agenda item for the next, uh, work session and to see what kind of impact that we have on staff.
Correct.
As far as them coming, because you're talking about needing to have the staff with the agenda items present. So.
Okay, absolutely.
And then get, Miss, uh, Miss Thursday in.
Yeah, absolutely. And certainly that was always my intent. I think the idea of this evening was to get, just to kind of get a sense of it. But yes, absolutely. And I'm, I concur with Ms. Cunningham, whether it's start in the morning and then can have an extended work session during the day, or move it back and have it in the evening. But splitting it up, I think probably is not going to be appropriate.
Not the same day. Right.
Yes, ma'am.
My, I just was going to go off of what Ms. Fields was saying. My biggest concern is not having the staff that have agenda items for the work session. It's if we have people coming and asking questions, they're going to be presenting new things that, are we going to have every staff member that could potentially be addressed? I mean, just like Tina was able to come in today and answer questions because she was sitting in her office watching. Are we going to have everybody stay until eight o'clock?
Yeah, we're not asking any staff to be here this evening.
Or are we?
Except for the absolute skeleton staff necessary to ensure that we're.
Right, right. I, for tonight. But I'm just saying, in the future, for having work sessions, I wouldn't want to have every staff member feel like they have to be here till eight o'clock because someone from the public might have a question. That, I feel like we need to find a way to address that where we can get the question and then address it at a later date where.
Absolutely.
People won't have to sit around and, I might have a question tonight, so I.
And I think the idea was to meet more often and not try to consolidate in this to, to another work session because that's where you're going to run into. If you're going to give us a presentation on a new projected, that's going to create all sorts of questions for people who aren't sitting in the, you know, like who aren't part of this. So I think it was, we've kind of gotten off where it was going to be a round table of board members able to discuss things under the sunshine law and expand on topic. And we moved to, now we're adding the public so they can, which is fine, almost a community meeting where you can give feedback. Then you're mixing staff in with new, so I don't know that, I think we need to talk about an additional. I, I would be a concern that things are going to be discussed that might be expansive.
So you envision, just us?
Uh, even if it was an hour ahead of it, or 30 minutes ahead of it, just to give time to talk about issues for us.
Ah.
That, that was kind of what.
Okay.
That's what the City of Lakeland does. And I don't mean to keep going back to them. But I tried to go to elected boards to figure out a better way of doing this.
That was kind of what I thought it was when we first started talking, not months ago when we first started talking about this, but in November, um, that it was just a time for us to talk not about agenda items. Because so often with work sessions, we end up, I mean, I think today we're two hours behind schedule. So we end up every, the board comments get short because we have to go to a discipline meeting or we have to go to executive session or the court reporters here, that type of thing, that this would give us an opportunity to talk freely about what's on our minds and what's affecting our schools and what different ideas we have, not necessarily so, something that's on the agenda. And it wouldn't be able to get cut short based on the next meeting coming up.
Mr. Rivers?
Thank you. Um, my recollection is the original suggestion was to have, um, an informal meeting that was noticed so that school board members could talk about things freely that you don't have the opportunity to talk about at work sessions or board meetings. Of course, there is already an opportunity at work sessions, but I think the concern was that they get long. Um, there's comfort in the idea of doing this in a work session format because we know that that format has been vetted, it's been audited, we know that that works. Of course, the distinction you're making is that traditionally our work sessions have not provided the opportunity for public comment. Uh, there is an opportunity for, of, public comment at board meetings, obviously, for agenda items. And we, we go further than the law requires by, by having an opportunity for them to address things that are not on the agenda. What the law requires is that before the board acts on an item, the public must have the opportunity to have input on it. Um, but if you, if you, if, if the, if this creature is morphing into something that is a, a discussion between among board members and the public, we'll probably have to give some thought as to how to manage that and regulate that. Because I, we, we simply have no idea where that could go.
Well, so what I would envision is the same approach we use currently, where they have three minutes to share their thoughts, much like we do in a board meeting. Um, is that, am I?
Yeah, I mean, it, it's your, it's your meeting. So I think you can, you can set it up however you want to do. Um, but the, the question is, what do you want it to look like? The, you know, the original concept was board members sitting around a table, talking to each other. Anybody who wants to listen to the conversation is welcome. And it is now seen, it seems to be morphing into something else. Not that there's anything wrong with that.
Right.
But what is it that you want this to look like? Remember the old, the old saw about a camel being a horse designed by a committee? Uh, what, what is it that you want this to look like?
And I guess that's my question. Mrs. Fields?
Just for information purposes, Hernando County School Board has done something similar. And they basically just had conversation amongst the school board members, uh, and, and, and the public was not, no one was in the room but the school board members and maybe the superintendent, from what I could understand. Doesn't mean that's what this needs to be, but I'm just saying there are, there's another school, uh, district that's trying to do the same thing. So might not be a bad idea to maybe look at that, that model.
Could we add that to like one of the second work sessions and still include, because the public wants to see us more often. That was part of the campaign.
There you go.
You're, you meet once a month. Good for you. We have a lot of stuff to tell you. I mean, that's just how it's been. So do we need to add something community-based and do this round table before work session? I mean, that's what we need to figure out.
Was, yes, sir.
Yeah, the possibility is, I, I think, I'm not aware of it if there are other districts that meet once a month to do business. Typically, districts do it twice. We used to do it twice. Uh, we have.
Right.
Consolidated that into one. And, and we've made changes that, that allow that to be done in a streamlined fashion. Uh, for instance, if there's a contract that requires approval by the school board because of its size, uh, and, but it needs to be, it needs to be executed before the, the next board meeting. And there's, there's a month until then. Uh, the board has delegated authority to the superintendent to do that. So we've done workarounds. But I think it's probably unusual for school boards to meet once a month to do business.
I mean, if we're running two hours behind, in the last meeting, it was almost a 12-hour run. Like, this cannot be effective or efficient. And I don't know how we got to one, wasn't around. Um, but, so it needs to be addressed, I think, how often we meet. Whether we include that board, um, conversation at one of the other work sessions and still allow a community meeting once a month, I think that might, you know, separate it. Because I, I agree with Sarah Beth, I didn't realize that component until you mentioned it. But if we're introducing contracts or newly, you know, that might mix where it's on, you know, it would bring the meeting into a very long.
Tonight wasn't set up for that at all.
Correct.
Right.
But I, I firmly believe, and I, I said this years ago, we need to go back to, to meetings, uh, a month. I mean, there's, this county's huge. It's just a trillion, billion dollars, you know? How do you expect to get all that business done in, you know, a brief amount of time is what it feels like to me.
So we, we have one board meeting a month, but we have two work sessions a month.
Right.
We do have two work sessions every month. Uh, well, there are some exceptions.
That run two hours over?
We, I, I, my, my answer to that would be, I don't have no way of knowing how to, how to gauge the comment section. I mean, that could be one hour, it could be five hours, I just don't know. So there's no way really to set that type of an agenda. So I think there's an expectation that the superintendent's portion of the agenda typically is pretty consistent. We might run a little bit over. I think that where we get going, you know, side, not sideways, but where they are extended.
Right.
Is when, when the board members have their discussions. And, uh, I'm not sure that, how to limit that. I'm not sure where we want to. But why don't we try this? For this evening, we'll have the board members portion first. We'll, we'll have our discussions and then we'll open it for folks to share their thoughts. And from there, we have an agenda item for our next work session to talk about it further and, 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 uh, more clearly define what we want to do moving forward. Does that seem reasonable to everybody?
Sure.
And that could mean, um, uh, that could mean adding another board meeting. We feel like we want to do that. It could mean adding, uh, a public component, whatever, whatever direction we feel like we need to go.
You try to set some parameters for tonight?
And moving forward.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, I, I don't think we have to prejudge how it goes. I like, I mean, I think the important thing is that we're together and have the chance to.
Well, we, we can introduce the, the public input component, which makes it a little more complicated. So, anyway, we'll do three minutes tonight, uh, for public input, as we always do. That's our policy. And then see where it goes from there.
And nothing will be decided tonight, but if there's an agenda item that comes from tonight, then it can be recommended for the following meeting.
Yes.
Right. And there, and there would be opportunity for public input on that agenda item at that meeting.
Right. For the one that it's scheduled for.
Yes, ma'am.
Right.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any other board comments? Courtney?
I'm, I'm good. All right.
There's nothing else of good.
There wasn't any more room on your, on your first. There wasn't any more room on your, on your first floor.